Welcome, everyone. I now call the October 14th, 2025 Regular City Council Meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. At this point, we'll take a moment to take roll call of the council members by position number. Please say here when the city clerk calls your name.
Thank you. Councilmember Zorn.
Here.
Mayor Thompson.
Here.
Councilmember Alderks.
Here.
Councilmember Kerd.
Here.
Councilmember Manke. Councilmember Dodd.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra.
Here.
All present with the exception of Councilmember Manke, who is absent and excused.
Thank you. First up is Meeting Agenda Approval. Are there any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to Public Engagement Opportunities. You can sign up for News and Alerts. You can stay informed by subscribing to the city's email newsletter for monthly updates and opportunities. You can also sign up for Emergency Alerts, which provide valuable information when the unexpected happens. And you can subscribe to both right on our homepage. I'll also take this moment to plug Councilmember Alderks does a newsletter that is a different way to get information on what's going on, and you can email her to get on that. Don't forget to vote. There are several local decisions for voter consideration on the ballot for the November 4th, 2025 election. Make sure to vote. And there is still time to register if you haven't yet. We've also got Trick or Treat on Main Street. On Halloween night, trick-or-treaters will make their way down Main Street for 30-plus candy shops hosted by local businesses, organizations, and the city of Bothell. This is a free and family-friendly event, and it is a ton of fun. And I'll be there. I agree, it's a ton of fun. My kids love it every year. All right. We have a proclamation for Hindu American Awareness and Appreciation Month. Whereas Hindu American Awareness and Appreciation Month seeks to bring local awareness, recognition, and acknowledgement of these significant contributions made by Hindu Americans across the United States, and whereas Hindu Americans represent diverse ethnic backgrounds, including individuals of Indian, Pakistani, Bangladeshi, Malaysian, Indonesian, Afghani, Nepali, Bhutanese, Sri Lankan, Fijian, Caribbean, and European descent; and whereas October holds significance as the birth month of Mahatma Gandhi, and often when major Hindu holidays such as Navarati and Diwali are celebrated; and whereas our nation has greatly benefited from Hindu Americans, especially through the Vedanta philosophy, Ayurvedic medicine, classical art, dance, music, meditation, yoga, literature, and community service; and whereas Hindu Americans share the entrepreneurial spirit of America and contribute to economic vitality, growth, and well-being; and whereas despite their positive contributions, Hindu Americans face stereotypes and misconceptions about their heritage and have been the targets of bullying, discrimination, hate speech, and bias-motivated crimes. Now, therefore, I, Mason Thompson, Mayor of the city of Bothell, do proclaim October as Hindu American Awareness and Appreciation Month to increase understanding of the Hindu American community and celebrate the influence their extraordinary cultural, ethnic, linguistic, and religious diversity has on our city. And I believe we have some community members here to accept. And it's on, and then we'll get everybody down and get a picture. Thank you.
On behalf of Hindu American community, we accept and thank you, Mayor, city councilors, and city staff for processing and awarding the proclamation during the festive season of Diwali. This proclamation sends an impactful and meaningful message to the Hindu American community in city of Bothell area and helps educate all Americans about our incredible traditions. Over the last few years, there has been significant growth of Hindu Americans in religion, and we have been contributing to all aspects of public life to our vibrant and diverse social fabric. It would bring the resident immense pride and gratitude to know that city recognize the contribution of Hindu Americans here. I'm happy to share that the Hindu American community, in collaboration with various community organizations, is engaged in driving a service initiative called Seva Diwali, a food drive donation campaign during this festive season, and contribute back to local food banks and under the serve in our neighborhoods. In 2024, during Seva Diwali Nation Void, we donated more than that $700,000 pound food to local food bank and centers. Thank you again for proclamation, and we look forward to continued engagement with city council on various community service initiatives. Thank you.
And if y'all would like to gather right up here by the city of Bothell. Whoever's.
This doesn't seem like a reasonable thing to do to talk about your newsletter.
Are you all asleep? Oh, okay. All right. Yeah. Yep.
All right. Next up is Public Comment. The city has accepted public comment and writing as well as sign-ups for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to the city clerk no later than 3:00 p.m. today were forwarded to all city council members and are part of the record. When the clerk calls your name, you'll have three minutes to speak. Please note that council will receive your input, but we do not engage in discussion of these topics. Staff will make note of items requiring follow-up. City clerk?
Thank you, Mayor Thompson. We've had nobody sign up and nobody sign up to speaker received any written comments. However, if anybody in the audience wishes to do so, please step to the podium. You'll have state your name for the record. You will have three minutes. If you are in the virtual audience, please use the raise hand function, and I will panel you in for three minutes. I'll give them a minute for that. Oh, please, step to the podium and state your name for the record. The podium. Thank you.
My name is Manoj Soni. So I just want to like, you know, a few things I want to communicate that as a Hindu religion, the one of the only foundation of the religion is to be able to serve. You know, if you are not serving anyone, then I'm not sure what is the religion, you know, as a Hindu we are following. So we have to serve. The second foundation of the religion is everyone on the earth, regardless of who or what they are, they are equal. They are, you know, from the same God, like, you know, they belongs, they are equal. So when we try to serve, we don't need to discriminate. Whoever need anything, any, anything to serve, we have to serve them. We should serve them. That's the foundation of our literature that we follow. That's the foundation of the religion that we follow, and that's the life that we, you know, live and try to convey in our kids as well, and then we see them. So here, like, the community member that I know and the groups that I am part of, we try to serve and then we enjoy. We really feel the happiness in serving, the happiness that we otherwise cannot buy otherwise, you know? I don't know how much promotion money and the things outside, they cannot give the inner happiness, but when you serve someone who is in actual need, and when they become happy by being served from you, it brings the real happiness to you, and that's the religion that the Hindu Dharma is. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? That's all I have. Mayor Thompson.
Thank you, city clerk. Also, you'll have to forgive me, we didn't prepare a proclamation or anything for you, but I did want to say happy birthday.
Who's responsible for telling you that one?
I'll give you two guesses, and you won't need the second one.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Next up is our, it was a good idea, but she might actually die if we sang her happy birthday, so we'll, it wouldn't be a happy birthday. Next up is our City Manager Report. City manager.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. You're right. It's good with the mid-bioennial budget update. It's good that we don't have to build in for claims for damages for any singing tonight. Thank you. We have three items before you in the City Manager Report tonight, and the first one is indicative of the season in that we have become accustomed to getting visits in the fall from our partners over on campus, and tonight is Cascadia College's turn. And so I'm pleased to welcome Dr. Eric Murray to present a little about what to expect with the academic year this year. And I'll just note, too, that one of the council priorities, again, is to work closely with Cascadia College and University of Washington Bothell to collaborate, and Dr. Murray makes that an easy priority to accomplish. So we're grateful for his, for his time in Bothell and the leadership he provides our community. Dr. Murray, thank you. I was only joking about moving you to the end of the agenda.
I didn't realize I was embedded into the City Manager's Report, so here I am. And let me say that I appreciate very much what the public comment was all about. I believe that Cascadia is also here to serve, and so thank you for that comment, and it's a good motivation for me to remember the purpose of our community college in our hometown. I am thrilled to say that I saw Mayor Thompson, Deputy Mayor Alcabra, Councilmember Dodd, maybe there were others on campus on Monday at our Indigenous Peoples' Day celebration, and very much appreciated the collaboration between the city, the school district, and the campus for that particular event. So thank you very much for continuing your support. Today is the Annual State of the College Address, and I've left the same slide deck pattern up for this year in celebration of our 25th anniversary. We just finished 25 years. It was an awesome year. We did a lot of celebrating, and I'm really proud that we still exist and that we're still here serving the Bothell community and the greater region. So that's why I wanted to remind ourselves of the 25th anniversary. So next, we're going to talk again this year about successes and challenges, next. And successes. So I knew this last week, but today, about two hours ago, it was official that our enrollment is up about 12% following a trend of 17% in '23, 20% in '24, and now 12% in '25. That is tremendous. We have now surpassed and have the greatest enrollment that we have had in the history of the college. We continue to grow and expand. The downside of this is while we are up that much, we are down 33% or about 100 of our international students, and that's a reflection of the federal landscape. Those students were either put on a travel ban or were not able to get their visas. That's a huge financial hit to the college, but we were up 15% in graduated students from high schools domestically, and we were up 15% in running start students, and that helped to offset the revenue hit of the international students. We believe this is going to be a trend, and we have to prepare for it, unfortunately. We believe that the international students on our campus provide such a rich diversity for our domestic students to experience the global world. So one of those challenges that we'll, you'll see actually in a slide coming forth. The next great success is that we are measured in a program called Guided Pathways on eight metrics. This is a program that helps students choose a pathway as they enter college and to graduate with the degree of their choice. And of those eight metrics, of the 34 community colleges in the state, Cascadia ranks number one in retention of students, in the transfer to university, and in getting students from pre-college math to college-level math. In the remaining five metrics, we are in the top five of each one of those, and so I'm pretty proud that our community college, our local resource, is doing so well in those numbers. Retention's about 90%, and the state average is in the 80s, and the national average is about 50%. So the state of Washington does really well at keeping our students and getting them into their career or university choice. With regard to transfer, we are the number-one transfer institution, and more students from our community college are accepted into the University of Washington than any other community college in the nation, including the state of Washington. And obviously, that becomes from our great close relationship with Uta-Bothell. When we asked, I asked my staff what our successes are within the campus. They pointed to our emergency grants. We've given over $50,000 away to students in need just in the last year to help with rent and tuition and other last-minute needs. We can check out a laptop to any student who needs one. We have our mentoring program called Cascadia Scholars, and both fortunately and unfortunately, our food pantry, the Kodiak Cave, has tripled in their service to students. That's great that we can provide the resource. It's unfortunate that that many students are still in need of food assistance. And then when we asked our students what they believed our successes were, they pointed to our Bachelor's of Computer Science Program, the fact that they can get on-campus housing if they desire through the University of Washington Bothell, that we allow them to enroll two quarters in advance. If you remember from your days or most other places, you could only register for the next quarter. Here, they get to lock in their classes for two quarters at a time. And then what I find particularly important is students report that our non-artificial intelligence in-person touch is hugely important to them, that they feel the one-to-one service that we can provide for them on campus is really helping them succeed in their academic career. So we have some challenges. Today, at noon, we had a visit from legislative staff around our new building. I want to thank the council for writing a letter of support for that last year. We didn't quite make the cut, but we are number one on the list for this coming supplemental budget. All indicators are that we will start break ground on the building, for which the city's been really collaborative with us in permit-making, and this is a student services building that will consolidate all of our student services into one place. I think the legislative staff who showed up today were pretty stiff at the beginning, but by the time the hour and a half rolled by, they were like, oh, yeah, you need this. So I hope that translates into legislation that approves the building for us. We talked about the federal landscape. I talked about the impact on international students. I'll just give you another small example, and I know it's all impacting us in one way or another, but all of our grant funds were with the Department of Education, and then they told us they're going to move it all to the Department of Labor. So we looked at our bank account at the Department of Education, and it was zero, and it wasn't until like seven or eight days later that our bank account was populated in the Department of Labor. So in that week, we had no idea where all of our hundreds of thousands of dollars had gone, or if it was even coming back. So this is, we got it, but it's just one small example of we need predictable responsive government, whether that's locally, statewide, or federally, just to make sure that our systems are secure. And so we deal with that challenge like you all do at the city. We have the dwindling state economy that we've got to focus on, and I know that of the 34 community colleges, at least five are truly struggling existentially, whether they're going to be here or not. And Cascadia is not one of those places. With our rise in running start students, we are a solid cornerstone of the community. Unfortunately, as we talked about, I wish international students, we could help do something to improve that group of students. Thanks. I wanted to just take a moment and talk about equity and inclusion at campus. It is still strong for us, and one of the things I think I'm most proud of this year is that, seven years ago, we started several different intentional programs. There was a difference in completion rates and transfer rates, student success rates between our historically underrepresented students and our white students to the tune of 10% to 12% differences. As of this summer, our data points to the fact that they are all completing, transferring, being retained, have GPAs that are equal, and so we have closed the gap between underrepresented students and our white students. The programs that we initiated are creating an even playing field for everyone to succeed at Cascadia, and we're especially proud of that. We continue our social justice high school conferences. If you want to see an awesome amount of energy of 300 North Shore high school students, I invite you to come to that in the spring. And then, as I mentioned last year, our Foundations of Equity and Inclusion course, which we offer to our employees, is also offered to any agency or business that would like to participate, and that really talks about how equity and inclusion is fundamental to the work that we do. And the last slide I prepared for you, we offered this course and were taken up by a construction company that believes in sustainability called O'Brien 360, and these are just some of their comments from the evaluation at the end of the course about how valuable the course was to them, and it really helped their business model. It helps their employees understand why they are in the sustainable building business and how equity and inclusivity is important to how we build communities. So just wanted to share that and offer once again that if the city has the desire to engage in that program, that we're here for you. So overall, the college is doing great. We are financially stable. Things are looking good this year. I do have to think about, now that I have my enrollment numbers today, about what the international thing means for me next year, because I can't believe that that's not going to go anywhere but down, which means that our revenue is going to go down, and so I have to contend with that over the next six months and make sure that we're in a good place. For now, though, we continue to be strong and have the best enrollment we've ever had. So I'll be happy to answer questions if you have any and/or let you get on with your business.
Councilmember Zorn.
I have a couple of questions. You just were reminding me that life is a game of whack-a-mole. It's just, there is no smooth sailing ever. So I, I'm glad you're fighting that battle, and I'm in my trenches because it takes a village to keep a village. I have a couple of questions. Food bank.
Yeah.
Is that something that the community can donate to?
Absolutely. There are certain requirements for what kind of food we can accept, but yes.
Like non-perishable?
Yeah, things like that.
Not current, not out?
Well, we do take some fresh foods, but I would be speaking out of turn if I told you what the requirements were. I would have to connect my person with you all to make sure we know exactly what the guidelines are.
So if someone wanted to make a donation, who would they contact?
I will get you that information.
Thank you. Okay.
Part of me wants to send you directly to our coordinator, but also maybe through our foundation.
Okay.
It depends on how we want to receive those kinds of contributions.
Great.
But I will connect directly with you on that.
That would be good to know. Thank you. And then the other question, students with disabilities.
Yes.
Whether it's, you know, processing, or
Yeah.
hearing, or sight, how are you able to meet their needs, or is that, and do you find students who have challenges coming and being part of the campus fabric?
100% yes to all of that, and it was part of, actually, my pitch to the legislative staff today. Our numbers of students with disabilities who present and want accessible services has more than doubled since the time I've been at the college, which is about 15 years now, and we have one of the best directors of this program in the entire state. He's looked to as a leader in this area, and I think that's one of the reasons why our services have increased. We are so able to do that competently. And so, yes, you'll see students with all kinds of needs, and we adjust to that pretty well.
Great. So the word is out that, that a student who needs a campus is responsive to them.
I'm sure they're going to want more staff
Go to Cascadia.
This coming budget cycle, because, yes, the need continues to grow.
Right. Right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Dodd.
Thank you. Thank you for the update. I really appreciate you coming out, even though you did reuse the slides. I'm teasing you, but.
I'll be more creative next year, and I'm also buying everyone a Cascadia College shirt less than $25 so that you can wear the swag on the day that I come, so.
I like it. I like it. I wanted to thank you for talking about the challenges you see, especially in the federal government environment that we're in. I think it's important that people understand how things happen and where they affect us in ways that we don't necessarily know in advance, so I really appreciate being forthright with that. Thank you.
It's a, it's a federal government that's impacting my business model, for sure, and I just wanted to share that with you. We're talking about $1 to $2 million of my budget being impacted by the different way of doing things.
Yeah. Well, and just dependability is so important, and you need to be able to pass that dependability on to the students who trust their education with you. Thank you.
Councilmember Alderks.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks so much for being here. You may have noticed that one of my kids does not attend Cascadia, and I was very excited about that, but.
I've been tracking all of your children very closely.
I'm sure you have. But, yeah, children make their own decisions and go and do different things, and so I have, I have a running start student at Lake Washington Tech at this time, and not to say that transferring doesn't happen, but
Sure.
right now.
We want them to go where they have the best fit.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. And, and so, but I am, you know, still a fan of the work that you're doing over at Cascadia and really appreciate all the ways that you welcome us onto campus. I'm really interested in learning more about the equity class that you mentioned, but I really want to congratulate you on closing the equity gaps that you mentioned. I'd love to hear just maybe like a brief summary of maybe the strategies of how you were able to accomplish that, and what did you feel was most successful in closing those gaps? Because it really is, it's a huge accomplishment to, to be able to bring to parity between groups in an environment where we very rarely see that.
Yeah. Briefly, I can point to three solid things. Some that you've heard about are Cascadia Scholars Mentoring Program is for historically underrepresented, and each mentor is assigned four students to guide throughout the year. That human-to-human contact of someone who can guide you is intensely important in student retention, and so any student who shows up who fits these criteria is eligible for a mentor, and we are almost to the place where we're running out of mentors because we have so many students who want that. That's number one. The second thing, and this is for all students, it's intrusive advising. You have to meet with an advisor before you can enroll in your next set of classes. You have to. Otherwise, you're barred from it. That connection, that planning with an advisor, is extremely important to keeping students on the right track and helps with retention. I would say the third thing is our students, via survey, which we're required to do by the state, feel the highest sense of belonging from any of the community colleges. They come to campus, they see themselves represented in the staff, they see themselves represented in the art, they see the topics that are important to them talked about, and those are intentional decisions on our part for staffing, for curriculum, for how we do extracurricular activities. So that sense of belonging has been something that we've really focused on. So those are the three things, and I think all community colleges are working towards those things. We just have doubled down on them, and I've made it work, and I think that's one of the reasons for that. And I would also say, in all seriousness, with yours, student at Lake Washington Tech, as a parent, if you hear things that are beneficial to that student there, please share them with me, because all I want to do is improve our program, and if you see something better there that we could do better in our program, I really want to hear about that. The mayor of Kenmore, who I talked to their city council last night, his son is at Cascadia, so I gave him the same thing. If his son is willing to talk to him about what's going on, he should tell me, and we'll work to make sure we, those students have the best experience possible.
Cool. Thank you very much for that, and congratulations again on closing those equity gaps. It's, it's a big deal, and, and grateful that, that you intentionally set out to support students and you are able to track and understand the impacts of that effort, so thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Dr. Murray, again. It's good to see you. When you mentioned the international student thing yesterday, you know, briefly, and then you expanded upon it today, you know, when you mentioned it yesterday, I once, when I came to the U.S., I was once an international student, and the opportunity that education provides over here, some international students would never be able to get in their home countries, you know? So it's saddening. I mean, you look at it from the person who's running, you know, an organization also, in addition to caring about the well-being of the folks. I'll just focus on the well-being of the people, because the money is your problem, not mine.
Yeah.
But as, and then here I am, you know? I'm not going to say how long ago, but here I am, and those people could be those folks who are depriving our country from benefiting from eventually. It's actually a very upsetting and sad thing for us, for us, all of us. So I hope situation changes so that those students will, will be able to come here and get the education they deserve and, and hopefully close the funding gap for you, but then we will benefit from them, because hopefully they'll stay around, stick around, work here, pay their taxes, and contribute to the society like everybody else.
Beyond the financial resources, the education our students get when interacting with someone from a different culture, a different land, a different way of being, is huge, and it helps them become better citizens in our own country when they have that experience. And it's not for lack of desire for students around the world who want to come to the United States. It's right now being held up because there's not enough staff to process visas, there's not enough approval of visas, there's a limitation on how many students are allowed to come to us, and that's unfortunate. So, I mean, part of me would love to take you on a recruiting trip, but it's not that we don't have the desire, it's just that we don't have the means of getting.
Oh, the demand is there, it's just we cannot allow them, we don't allow them to come here. come here for whatever reason. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Dr. Murray, thank you for coming and giving us updates. And thank you for all the ways that you show up in the community around here as well. We are better off as a community because we have Cascadia and because we have you.
I appreciate all of you and happy to turn this back over to my colleague, City Manager Stanek. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager, we are going to take a quick break right now. It is 6:30 P.M. We're going to wait for 10 minutes. We'll be back at 6:40. All right, we are back and we will continue the City Manager Report.
Thank you, Mayor. Our next two items are both internal updates, so appreciate appreciate Dr. Murray coming and giving them the opportunity to go first. Tonight, you're receiving your annual DEI staff update. Now, of course, you also get other DEI updates throughout the year when there are topical items to bring, and we certainly benefit from Gabby's presence for a number of support roles for different topics and events. But tonight is the dedicated annual update that you'll receive, and you'll note in your packet that there's three areas of focus primarily, the DEI Advisory Committee, Youth Engagement Strategy and Training Opportunities. But you're welcome to ask questions on other things as well. I am going to turn things over at the table to, we are joined by Becky Range, our Assistant City Manager, and of course Gabby Kuna, our DEI Coordinator.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council and Community. As City Manager Stanek said, I'm here for our annual DEI staff update. Just to start with council action, no action is needed. This is a staff update tonight. And for some background, the city's DEI program, Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Program, is rooted in the philosophy that at the core of what we do, we provide day-to-day services that impact the lives of every single person who live, works, plays and learns in the city. And in order to do that well, we have to incorporate equity into everything that we do. Our program is guided by our 2023-2026 DEIB, Throwing and Belonging Roadmap. And that strategic plan is both aspirational, meaning that it's a values-based commitment, it's something we look towards the future, and it is operational, meaning that it creates specific, measurable and realistic goals for each department to work towards. And as part of that measurable goal, we come for an annual update. As A Manager Stanek said, we do have updates that are outside of tonight's presentation, but tonight we're going to focus on three of our large-scale ongoing projects. And then at the end, I'm going to have a quick teaser for some upcoming projects as well. So we'll go ahead and get started with our DEI Advisory Committee, some of which are here tonight. So thank you for them for coming out. As mentioned in your agenda, following last summer's discussion about new advisory bodies, a DEI Advisory Committee was formed. The committee began meeting in May of this year and will continue meeting through December 2026. It is currently an ad hoc advisory committee. And it serves a dual purpose, both to advise staff and to act as community liaisons. As part of that dual purpose, they have been receiving what we like to call departmental highlights in hopes that it'll empower organic community engagement. So at the beginning of each of their meetings, they receive departmental highlights that invite department directors to come, speak to them, share information about their departments, what they do, how they function, their different upcoming engagement opportunities. But I would say even more importantly is a direct opportunity for our DEI Advisory Committee members to engage directly with them, to tell them what's important to them, to ask questions and to learn more about each of our city's departments so that they can go out into the community and share about the departments and say, hey, did you know this new roundabout that we have? It actually does this, and this is why we have it. And actually do that person-to-person engagement because we know that that's far more effective typically than if a city staff member is going out to do it. In addition to the department highlights, they're currently reviewing the 2023-2026 DEI roadmap. They're going through each of the different goal areas to give feedback and review so that they can begin planning for the next stage of strategic planning. As we know, 2026 is not far away, and we're starting to already think about what the next stage of that strategic plan is. So they have been instrumental in that. In addition to the work that we've done with the DEI Advisory Committee, we've also started work with a comprehensive and meaningful youth engagement strategy. This engagement, we have both ongoing and kind of one-off engagements that I would would say. Our ongoing youth engagement is a pilot program, which is a partnership between the North Shore School District and their Racial and Educational Justice Committee. So it actually involves community members who are on their volunteer committee. And this involves both classroom visits with Bothell and North Creek High School students as well as them visiting our city hall. So some of you were available last week when we did our Youth Engagement Summit, where we brought about 50 students from North Creek High School this year to join us in city hall and spend the day learning about their local government and how they can use it as a tool for action and advocacy in their community. In addition to the ongoing engagement we have, we also have a a retinue of different one-off engagement opportunities with with students of all ages, including scout troops, field trips where we go out or classroom visits where we go out and speak to students of all ages, as well as some of our ongoing programs like Law Day, where we bring students from from the Bothell High School and North Creek High School law classes. We also have programs that we work with some of our high school clubs on, including Juneteenth, which was a collaborative celebration we had earlier this year, where we worked with the North Creek High School Black Student Union to put on a Juneteenth program for the community. I I loved Dr. Murray earlier talking about the program that they have. We've also been building out a foundations of DEI program that's offered to our staff regularly, that is offered throughout the year and is complemented by a ongoing topical and department-specific trainings throughout the year. So those trainings focus on things like understanding ableism, disability inclusion, language access, racial and ethnic racial and ethnic groups within our community. And they are offered to departments throughout the year specifically, but then offered to city staff at large. We also, very recently, I'd like to shout out, Tony from our Parks and Rec Department led a department discussion with his field operations crew about Parks and Parks and Rec and Equity and how their work directly has equity impacts within their within our community. So that was a great staff-led training within the Parks and Rec Department. In addition to the trainings that we have for our city staff, we've been looking into trainings based on targeted universalism, based on state recommendations, offered from the Othering and Belonging Institute for council members and advisory body participants. This is a free and virtual training that can be joined at any time. You can follow along at your own pace, but provides a really deep understanding of how identity impacts policy and how we can create policies and procedures that work for everybody to lift everybody up. And then thinking about some of our ongoing projects. So as I mentioned, the DEI roadmap is a large-scale strategic tool. It has about 54 action items on it, and I didn't think I could fit 54 updates into this 10-minute presentation. So we are actually working on a roadmap tracker so that both you and the community can follow along to all 54 of those action items and learn where we're at on each of one of them, see which ones are on track and what has already been completed. So we'll, we're hoping to roll that out later this year. And then don't worry, you'll be seeing more of me in the future because we're also working on a community partnership policy that really formalizes how city can partner with community organizations that are looking to host events and programs in our community focused on creating a sense of welcoming and belonging for all of our community members and really formalizes that support. So you'll be seeing more of me soon. Again, no action is needed at this time, but I am happy to answer any questions you might have.
Councilmember Dodd.
Thank you. Thank you for the update, Gabby. I don't have any questions. I just wanted to call out right now while you're in front of us that I am like continually and like freshly amazed at all the programs that you bring, especially your partnership with the school district. I am a North Shore alum and now on council, and none of these programs are things that I recall being available when I was in any North Shore school. And it is so cool to see them now for students today. So I just want to really thank you for all the work you're doing. It is visible and perhaps, and nobody else get jealous, please, but perhaps your programs are the ones I hear the most about from people out and about as I live my life in Bothell. So I really appreciate your work. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. You mean, nobody talks about the sewer pipes?
Some people talk a lot about sewer pipes, but as far as the amount of people talking.
In Amanda's world right now, sewer pipes.
Yeah, yeah. No, thank you. I appreciate you being here. And I mean, one of the reasons I joined along with my colleague, Councilmember Aldrichs, trying to be more formal, is to exactly see this program come to fruition and expand be above and beyond, it's expanded above and beyond what I even thought it would be become. So I appreciate you. I think you made a great hire here, Becky. I think give her a raise. We're talking about budgets here soon, so. I appreciate I appreciate everything you're doing, Gabby. I appreciate everything the the team over there is doing, the DEI Advisory Group. It'll be great to also have, you know how we have a those round tables with the other parks and the commissions and boards? It'll be probably good to have one of those at some point, just have a conversation around DI programs and just to to brainstorm and discuss together. But thank you for everything you're doing. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. I just want to say the Public Works Department came earlier this year to do a department highlight, and we had a lot of really cool discussion about sewer pipes. I did not think they were going to let our Public Works Director leave the room. So I just want to say, people really like.
I saw a really cool during the 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 that high school thing we had last, I mean, Boyd was here and he showed me some really cool things. It's like, man. And he made me cut the ribbon, so to speak. So it's like really cool.
I'm just imagining Boyd going to a DEI meeting and talking about cure and place pipe, like, and everybody loving it.
And Deputy Mayor, I was just just following up on on your interest in a joint meeting. Just as a reminder, when the DEI Advisory Committee was formed, the decision was made in this interim first step was that it's it's advisory to to staff. And that part of that was is to slow walk into the formalization. But one of the in the first meeting, Gabby mentioned that our first meeting was in May, and one of the first discussions was around wanting their input on how to then consider a transition to having it be a formal board and commission that's ongoing. And I I suspect that that conversation will have like it's ad hoc now. This group will not expire before that conversation happens. And I think at that point, it would be a perfect opportunity to do a joint meeting as you decide to do that. And so I think that'll be probably, you know, somewhere in the next six to eight months. If that might be on the out, I always guess conservative, but we'll be setting something up. And I do think that'll be a great opportunity to hear more and really envision what, as you get to consider what the city code will say, what the purpose is, helping get their input on what that purpose could be. I'm excited about it.
Sounds good. Thank you for bringing us back on track.
Councilmember Zorn.
Gabby, thank you for doing what you do. You you are such a delight, and it is really fun to see this workspace become very human. That makes sense. And Friday was fun. I always enjoy being around kids and and even when they're not trying to be engaged, they're they're engaged. So it was it was great. So for me personally here on the diocese is wrapping up really quickly, but I am excited to I'm looking forward to being able to see the roadmap tracker of 54 things going on and then working on a community partnership. That is something that we've heard for a long time, is different members of the community wanting to be engaged with the city. And so you're doing that. So thank you very much.
Councilmember Curd.
Thanks. Thank you, Gabby, for the presentation. I think it's really timely because there have been a lot of events that we've been invited to, and whether or not my schedule allows me to attend, I'm really grateful for the invitations. I think that it's important to be sort of one community as the city. And so I really appreciate the invites. Thank you. Keep them coming. The roadmap, I realize, is on the webpage, and when we talk about it, it's 2023 to 2026. And I anticipate that because it was the first roadmap that was developed for the city, some things might be changing, some things there might have been some lessons learned. So I hope that you're tracking those and those can come out alongside of the dashboard. You know, we love a good dashboard, but we also love lessons learned and how we can do better in the future. And so those are really valuable feedback that you and the commission are collecting and staff too. And so I hope that you'll collate that and keep it keep it top of mind as we look to the future as well. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And that was one of the major impetus, I would say, for the dashboard was understanding that without being able to easily present what we are doing to our community, we can't hear back what we can do better. So I look forward to having that made public so that it'll be easier in the future.
I think the finance team perked up a little bit when you said dashboard. They're like, ooh. Councilmember Aldrichs.
Thank you, Mayor. Gabby, thank you for putting all of this work together and bringing it to us. I'm grateful that we have the advisory committee. And I can't, I can see you a little bit. Hi, thank you for being here and thank you for your service to our community. I really do enjoy seeing you out and about in the community when I've been able to connect with you outside of here. And it's just, it's so important to have a a group of voices that can advise. And and while it's a staff connection right now, I'm grateful that the intention is to be more policy-oriented in the future and to see those conversations continue. Really grateful to see the youth engagement opportunities. And and because I think like I I know that we feel like I feel heard when we come to council and we, you know, make we put diversity and equity goals into our council priorities. And, you know, when we are able to to study how we're going to implement the recommendations from our consultant and turn it into a roadmap, like we, you know, I came into council with with a hope, and it's really been realized in some really great, lovely ways that it's becoming sustainable and built in across departments. And I really do credit you, Gabby, for for that work. And thank you to our Assistant City Manager, Becky Range, for for taking the initial steps towards that as well. This is really great to see. I'm looking forward to seeing, you know, a way to kind of visually track each of the goals that were set out in the roadmap to see how the roadmap evolves for the next three-year planning cycle. And really just appreciate everybody who's contributed to this and and made these ideas become practices and and that we are well on our way to becoming, you know, sustainable practices as well that that will continue. And I really appreciate that. Thank you.
I'll just echo what my colleagues have said. Briefly, Gabby, we really appreciate you. I hear about you from people in the community regularly, and it is always glowing. And Becky, like I I'm old enough to remember back in like 2022 when we were like, hey, we want to do this thing. And they're like, well, we don't have any staff for that. And we were in the like, well, just have Becky do everything that we don't know where to put era. And this was one of those things. And really appreciate the work that you did to get this off the ground and hiring Gabby. And we're just, it's it's really fun to see things kind of come to fruition that are the result of years of effort that take time. So thank you all for coming. Thank you to the members of the committee for coming tonight as well. We really appreciate the work you do.
All right. And Mayor, one last update, and I'll welcome Ray Sosa to the table, our senior planner. You may recall that in January, you initiated a Housing Action Plan update, and we are now in the middle of the second phase. And much like I can't believe that it's October, and we had a conversation about it getting dark within the first hour of our meeting, this is a this this is a sign that 2025 is slipping by us. But what we wanted to do tonight is to provide council a brief update about the community engagement update as part of the Housing Action Plan. And Ray will walk you through that tonight and see if you have any questions. So as the So as the PowerPoint comes up, I'm going to turn things over to Ray.
Thank you. Good evening, council. Tonight, I'm here to provide the council with an update on the Housing Action Plan. I will begin tonight's presentation with a high-level overview of the entire Housing Action Plan and its subprojects, followed by an overview of current and future engagements for the plan, for the efforts for the plan update itself. No action is required tonight. Staff will present city council status update of the Housing Action Plans, as I mentioned. Starting with a high-level overview of the Housing Action Plan. Entire Housing Action Plan effort can be divided into three distinct but related efforts. Strategy update itself in orange, the middle housing and inclusionary zoning code updates and amendments in purple and in green. And the code, the middle housing code update will be wrapped up by the end of the year. And inclusionary zoning amendment will continue with a second phase starting next year, which includes revising our MFT program, multifamily tax assumption program. To get these three projects drive forward the purpose of the Housing Action Plan to create a policy to accommodate growth in our city. Moving on to the plan update itself, here's a timeline showing our phased approach to the development of the plan. This approach follows the same work pattern as the Climate Action Plan and the Urban Forestry Management Plan, which you may be familiar with. Starting with Phase One, staff began to scoping the preliminary research in September of last year through the end of March of this year. That work included setting the goals and objectives for the plan that drive the creation of the plan moving forward. This also set us up for our second and current phase, Phase Two, which we are in right now, where we worked to select and onboard an external consultant to help staff with public outreach. We are underweighting Phase Two with several focus groups lined up for engagement in the coming weeks through the end of this year. In the subsequent phases, we will produce an initial draft of the Housing Action Plan for public comment to city council, planning commission, and the general public included. We are on track for adoption of the final plan by the end of next year, 2026. Some of the tools we are using to reach out and engage the public include our Engage Bothel online platform, which is, as you can see right here, where residents and interested individuals can sign up to stay up to date with our latest engagement efforts as they come about. Shown here are some of the responses staff have received at two events for staff table. Staff will be taking these boards at future public events as well, and I'm getting the data to analyze as we, to help us inform our engagement. Our goal is that engagement throughout the life of the project will collect meaningful input on the plan's proposed goals and objectives to address the city's housing shortage. As I mentioned earlier, we are on track for the end of 2026 adoption of the final Housing Action Plan. And in summary, no actions required. Thank you for, actions required. So thank you.
I think your presentation was so thorough that everybody's tongue-tied. But no, we really appreciate the work that you're doing on this. We're looking forward to seeing those next steps come in and what the public engagement response is. And we appreciate the update. So, thank you.
All right. We'll keep updating you as the project moves forward. With that, Mayor, we have reached the end of the City Manager Report, and I'll turn it back over to council.
Fantastic. Thank you. Next up is council committee reports, community reports, and conversations. After that, it is projected agenda discussion. Does any?
Well, I was wondering if you were going to give an update from Eastside Transportation Partnership.
I was not.
But I can.
Please do.
At the October 10th meeting, Eastside Transportation Partnership reviewed changes in bus routes. And one that was particularly relevant to Bothell writers is that there will be a new transfer at 145th and Seattle to get into Lake City. I think that was in, to improve connections to Light Rail. And so that was an update that we heard. I can get more information if you're curious. We also reviewed state and federal legislative priorities, and there were a couple of interesting points that were brought up during that discussion. We learned that the federal government is not likely to be receptive to bike and pedestrian projects. That language is just not going to be rewarded for cities who are seeking federal funding. But when it comes to the state, some of the previous projections were possibly more cautious than they needed to be. So there may be more transportation funding available in the next budget cycle. So some, some bright spots, I guess. And that was, that was, those were the notes that I got from that meeting. And both the mayor and I were able to attend and participate in that. So, thank you.
All right. Now we'll move on again to the projected agenda discussion. And if nobody has anything, I would love to take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Alderks and a second from Councilmember Curd to approve the consent agenda. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Councilmember Zornz.
I just want to make a quick comment. One of the things, items on our consent agenda is some, a number of safety projects that are happening throughout the city. And there's radar signs and channelization for speed, flashing beacons, and it involves several areas across the city. And I just want to thank staff for identifying those and working on those. And just encourage the city that if they're concerned, if they would like to see more of this, let us know, and don't forget to vote. So.
Yeah, I'll absolutely echo that and just specifically say thanks to the Public Works Department because there are a couple of projects in there that we are able to be just responsive to residents who have a concern. And when, when, when we are responsive to the concerns that our community brings us, that just makes my heart glad. So I am particularly happy to, to approve the consent agenda tonight. City Clerk.
Thank you. Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmember Zornz.
Yes.
Mayor Thompson.
Yes.
Councilmember Alderks.
Yes.
Councilmember Curd.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fabra.
Yes.
Passes 6-0 with Councilmember Manke, absent and excused.
All right. We're going to go down there and do the study session for the 20, well, I'll tell you down there. All right. We have a study session, Agenda Bill 25174, for the 2025 Annual Comprehensive Plan Amendment and Miscellaneous Bothell Municipal Code Amendments. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. And yes, council, this is the first of two study sessions tonight. And again, there are some, some minor actions related to amending the comprehensive plan, which, as you know, you can do once a year. We're joined tonight by Christian Gutz, our Deputy Director of Community Development. But Christian's also joined at the table, table tonight by one of our newer employees, Planner Deborah Powers. And welcome, Deborah. Just from, again, it's a, it's a first council meeting. So just to give you a few highlights, I want to assure you that you're going to see Deborah more often. And while she's stepping into an annual process tonight, you'll be seeing her lead some presentations going forward. Her background includes working for Facet, which was formerly the Watershed Company, which you've probably heard of before. But she's also, there she was, worked as a planner, but also she has about 15 years' experience combined working for the cities of Edmonds and Kirkland in urban forestry as a planner and as the urban forester in Kirkland. She's, she's had a number of stops and a lot of, of forestry-related experience. We're thrilled to have her on our team as a planner, helping as we shape the future of the community. Then I'm going to turn things over to Christian to lead us through tonight's presentation.
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council. That's a great introduction to Deborah, Deb, as I know, as I know her already. And yeah, you'll see a lot more of her as she wraps this up and then takes a seat with Cameron, working through the Urban Forestry Management Plan and likely many other things related to trees. So tonight, we are not seeking any action. The purpose is to just run through this, this step that we've got to take to update the comp plan as well as some of our miscellaneous code amendments. And I'll run through what those are to, tonight here. So the comp plan update is solely focused on middle housing associated updates, which, which makes sense. We just did all that work, but there's not much else to, to focus on. The one thing that we didn't do with the comp plan last year was incorporate the four to six for the RL designations. So this supports that parallel code amendment project that Ray is working on, which you'll see wrap up in its, on its course. And this is very, very discreet, as you saw in the packet. There's just a few little tweaks to change it, to make it work out. It does not change any growth or capacity adjustments. It might, it slightly increases our overall capacity. But those are, you know, long-term projections. So we don't anticipate it making any, any significant changes to, to what we're planning on for the next 20 years. So that's all that there is for the, the comprehensive plan. The miscellaneous code amendments, these, as described within the packet, are really all those little teeny things that we missed that we often find when a homeowner, builder is proposing a project and they say, wait, this doesn't make any sense. There's a parking code requirement referenced in here, or there's something about circle lot diameter. That, I don't think that exists anymore. So through that work and through, you know, the additional scouring through the code, we found a series of these updates. A few of them were a little bit more visible, having to do with how to, how to average the corner lot standards, really making sure that we're very, very clear and applying it across the board. And the majority of them were within the subareas. So all of them were either cleanup or consistency. None of them were policy-related. We're just taking the policy that you all established last year with the comp plan update and making sure that, and, and the subsequent zoning code, and making sure that we're finding any of those, those little things, which is just good planning practice. With that, I don't have anything else to, to kind of talk through. I'm happy to answer any questions on any specific proposals that are out there, what we found, how we found them, why we're proposing what we're proposing. But all in all, they are just to align with what we've already established, whether it's within the base zoning or, like I said, eliminating any random required parking references that are in there.
May I leap in quickly? Okay. One, urban forestry. I'm like, oh, dug on. I should have, I should have re-upped and filed in May because that's very exciting. So I will be watching from the peanut ground, the peanut gallery in January. So welcome to Bothell. Great group of people here. I'm sure you've already found that. And Edmonds, being my old hometown, I'm, you know, loves some time to hear the work that you did there. But I do have a question. It was on page 72 of our agenda packet, the last paragraph where it says, "Increasing the middle housing maximum number of units within the RL designations," and you alluded to this while we were, you were talking. "From four middle housing units per lot up to six does not have significant impact in the comp plans. Growth modeling assumptions or projections and growth is not shifting from one part of the city to another." So, not significant changes. What is going to, what is the most realistic thing that you can see that's going to start moving more population further north?
Sorry, further north?
Yeah, yeah, well, right. From one part of the city to the other.
Oh, you know, what, what we kind of picture, you know, between the, for this middle housing type, there are some, there's a little bit of an overlap between the residential low designation or the RL zones, and then the residential medium, the RM zones. And so somewhere right in the middle, there's this kind of sweet spot where we'll see a lot of middle housing products. They might be within the RM zone, they might be within the RL zone. And so now with this shift, we're seeing that, that middle, that dividing line between those two zones, or in the case of the comp plan, the designations, that line may shift, it may nudge a little bit up into that RM territory, meaning the RM products might, might decrease. But all in all, you're getting the same, they're essentially the same product types. An example of how many additional units you might see, the city of Seattle, they're a tier-one city, so they have this essentially already set. They only anticipated around 100 units that are produced when you're doing the up to six. So we're anticipating probably more at the three to four, maybe five range, but not many at the six. Over their 20 years, they were only anticipating around 100 units that were going to be built above the four-unit base. So it's, it's, I don't want to say infinitesimal, but it's really, really small compared to that, to that broad target. So we can't pick a number of how many we think there might be, but it's going to be relatively tiny.
Well, it's good to be realistic. But if we're talking about, you know, and this, this is not the context for it, but if we're talking about increasing our population, it, it's going to have to be focused. I'm, I'm Captain Obvious here right now. But it's going to have to be focused with a different housing type in, in the Canyon Park area, if we're going to really start moving populations more dense into the Snohomish County area. Is, is the impression that, that this is confirming that, that this is not going to be a big density mechanism. We got to, we got to be looking at other housing types to do that. So, thank you.
Thanks for the presentation. I always like a good autumn cleanup. I, I had a question about the vegetation, sort of vegetative buffer or setback, not setback, vegetative barrier for the midtown area. What came up and what was the cause of, of this change?
Yeah, recognizing that the, between the RM, which is now purple and that higher-density zone by Safeway and everywhere along there, just to the west, that was low-density residential, it was increased in its designation and zoning to an RM1 or some, some of them are three. So that increased up zone kind of gave us, you know, pause to say, well, wait, we should recognize that, that the, the highest to best use and what the, the future target is, is to have that more than low-density residential, to have it at medium-density residential. So we looked at Title 12, Section 18, where the landscape buffer standards, if you're in this zone and you're adjacent to this zone, find where they align, and that's what your buffer should be. We didn't want to drop it down too much because we recognized there's value in keeping it relatively consistent, but not coming up with something, or not utilizing something that was established specifically for that higher-density midtown use adjacent to a low-density zone. So recognizing that it went to medium-density, we felt, let's look at what an existing landscape buffer standard is and apply one of those so it's not a unique item. And that's always, and that, that creates a lot more consistency where you can point to, just go to the landscape standards, wherever you are, look at your zone that you're adjacent to, and apply that.
I love that. That's very simple. The other thing that I was thinking about, when you put the flume map up in the packet, and when I was reading through, I was thinking, well, the city did investigate and/or purchase property now in midtown. And I'm wondering if, it might be pretty early, but if the current designation or zoning is challenging for any of the type of uses that we're looking at, because it's now, it would be a public facility, rather than what it used to be, like a commercial mixed zone. Have you, is that too granular, I mean, that's too granular for changing the flume, but is, have that come up in any conversations? Or is that something that's, community development is tracking?
Yeah, it's sort of as they, as individual parcels come up, just general annual code cleanup, it is, it is good practice for us to recognize, you know, when we get a question about a property, no matter who the applicant may be, or who the inquisitor may be, reevaluating, okay, did we miss something? Because we were really looking at, your zoning is this with the code change. It, along with every other zone that was designated, that is shifting to this new designation as we bumped them up. And so, we don't, without going through every single parcel, we want to do that, and we will eventually get through all of them, whether it's by, when an applicant recognizes and raises their hand and says, what's going on here? This seems like it might have needed to be a lower-density, or a higher-density, or different uses. We can explore that, whether it's through the private docket request or as part of a code cleanup, or a sub, better yet, a sub-area revisitation. So, we do recognize those when they come up. And we try to be aware of where there might, might be something just a little off in what we're, what we're seeing in the code.
Okay, so, that kind of answers my question. It hasn't come up, so it's not in the.
Right. It has not come up. No, no, no.
Great, thank you. Thanks for confirmation.
Thank you for preparing this and, you know, taking that next step beyond the comprehensive plan. We are out of the planning phase and into the implementation phase. And this is a, you know, this is not like a year-nine code amendment process, where, you know, it's been a while, and, you know, when we were feeling like updates are really needed, these are just more, you know, like the cleanup, like you said. Now, I'm maybe going to ask a very naive question, but I am going to do this in the spirit of there are probably others who have a similar question. Does the vegetation buffer that is described in here, is that related to the fringe of trees that I hear people talk about, like maintaining Bothell's fringe?
No, the feathered edge, I think is what you're.
The feathered edge, thank you. Yeah. Okay, no, it does not. Okay. And then, like, within 30 feet, like, what? Like, that could be a significant number of trees in between, you know, one zone to another zone, is that correct?
Yes, within that 30 feet would be, you know, there was established a planting standard with a site obscuring fence on the property line. So, decreasing that to follow what the landscape chapter has for a 20-foot landscape buffer with a fence and 20 feet of, you know, site obscuring, you know, intended to be conifers that are screening between the uses.
Yeah, which is probably what makes Bothell recognizable to us as members of the community, is that we're used to seeing stands of trees, you know, frequently, like throughout the city. And so, this was sort of helping me put together, like, that's how we get the things looking like they look. And I'm sure that there, you know, there will definitely be more conversations about trees and urban forest, and I look forward to those. What I saw proposed in here made sense, seemed consistent with how we needed to continue making updates. My understanding is that there, have there been a number of requests made by the community to update or amend or change? I haven't necessarily heard many.
No, the private docket request deadline is October 31st.
Okay.
For those listening, and we received one. So, our process would be, we'll take that to Planning Commission, come to Council the beginning of the year with Planning Commission's recommendation to study it or not.
Great, thank you very much. Well, I appreciate the work and preparation that's gone into this, and I'm comfortable with what I see proposed here. Thank you.
Thanks. Excuse me. Thanks for this. I really appreciate this. This kind of takes it full circle from when we started talking middle housing the first go-around, and really just finishes what we heard from our community and committed to them. So, thank you for, thank you for coming on that journey with us. And Deb, thank you for choosing Bothell. Like, welcome. We're excited to have you here. It was cool hearing about your background, and I'll look forward to seeing presentations from you. Same, I'm comfortable with this and appreciate the update. Cool. We'll make it harder next time, I'm sure. Yeah.
It's nice to have a, the year after a major comprehensive plan update, it's nice to have a technical tie-up. All right, well, our second study session is another annual process, so much like the comprehensive plan happens once a year, while we can amend the budget more often. What we do need to do is, every year at the mid-biennium, is to come in and make updates. When things are volatile, sometimes there might be significant updates, but our goal is always to have technical ones that are tie-ins and just some quick corrections. We're pleased to say that that's the path that we're on this year. I was also just thinking about the fact, like, with Christian mentioning, we're already, you know, planning now for the 2026 comprehensive plan annual amendments. That process is already starting up. Gosh, four to five meetings deep already on planning for the 2027, 2028 biennial budget. And so, that's just a reminder of how these things keep going, and we look ahead, and all the more reason why at the mid-biennium, sometimes there's some things to do, a few updates on. So, with that, we are joined this evening by our Finance Director, Kwan Wong, and also our Deputy Finance Director, Andrew Wan Chong, who is going to lead us in the presentation tonight. Andrew, thanks for being here.
Thank you, City Manager. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council members, we're, save the best for last. Pleased to bring you a study session on the 2526 mid-biennium budget update. There's no council action required tonight. This is just a study session for us to inform you about the mid-by budget updates and take feedback. So, first, just a timeline of what to expect for the next few weeks. Tonight, we have our study session on the mid-by amendments, including the 2026 property tax levy and 2026 fee schedule. Next week, we'll have a public hearing on the mid-by budget amendments and the 2026 property tax rates. And November 4th, proposed council action to adopt the 2026 property tax ordinance and the 2026 fee schedule resolution. And finally, December 2nd, council action on the mid-by budget update amendment ordinance. So, we'll dive in deeper on the next slides, but the mid-by budget update falls into three broad categories: general fund operating adjustments, capital program adjustments, and then the 2026 rates and fees. So, the first section's general fund budget updates. The first item is transferring 500,000 to the Budget Stabilization Fund. In 2024, council passed the policy setting a target of between 10% and 15% for the, between 10% and 15% of general fund expenditures for the Budget Stabilization Fund. I'm an accounting and finance nerd, so I'm very grateful council has the vision to plan long-term for the city's financial stability. So, currently, the 2526 budget includes a transfer of 250,000 annually. And as discussed when the policy was adopted, if the general fund, fund balance is above the 90-day minimum threshold, an additional 500,000 will be transferred, which will help us reach the target for the city's financial stability. The next item is the opioid settlement fund, funding. So, the, we're just starting to spend now for the opioid settlement money. The largest portion is for the contract with the YMCA. The packet currently does not include the revenue side, so this is a budget-neutral item. And the final piece, there's a miscellaneous item that was missed initially in the original budget for low-income assistance for utilities. The next section is the capital project adjustments. There's three sections. The budget updates, roughly $3 million. These are for cost increase. This is also budget-neutral. Funding has been secured through grants and various other surpluses. Scheduling updates, around $2.4 million, are for projects that are, were not completed previously, and this is simply moving the budget forward to the next cycle. And the item for Shop 1 is the only item that's not a housekeeping item. It's for the purchase of land. The original site for Shop 1 was not suitable. This is also budget-neutral, it's 3.7 purchase that will be reimbursed by the state. Next, we have the fee schedules. Majority of the fees are unchanged or increased by June CPI, which is 2.7%. There are some exceptions. There are community development fees. There's a study completed in 2024 that reviewed the community development fees and found that there was not full-cost recovery. 98% approximately of costs were recovered, but there are a few items where full costs were not recovered. So, fire-preventing land use-related fees, some of them have been adjusted. Not all of the recommendations have been implemented. Staff is still evaluating the impacts of those fees and may return in the future to amend those fees. And everyone save it, property taxes. The 2026 Kings and Snohomish County Property Tax Ordinance is due to the counties by November 26, 2025. The 2026 budget assumed that we will be taking the 1% increase plus new construction. Here's a look at the typical taxpayer. The city is only a relatively small portion. Majority of the property taxes are the state school funding and the school district funding. Medium home, bless you. Medium home taxpayer with the current rates in 2025 pay $1,463. The average homeowner in Snohomish County pays $1,265. Last thing is the EMS levy ordinance. Council will need to convene and act as the Bothell Urban Emergency Medical Services District Board. That levy ordinance is also due to Snohomish County by November 26th. And the budget also assumed that the EMS levy 1% increase will be taken, plus new construction. And again, there's no council action required tonight. We are here simply to provide you with information and get your feedback.
Thank you. It's been, this is very helpful. I read through all this, the packet info also, and I wanted to ask some clarification. There are tables on like pages 109, 108, 109, 110, where it says that there's a cost, the cost increase overall is 9.3 million, and then, like, if you look at page 110.
Is that the capital? Yes.
Yes. It's like, it's after this, it's right here, yeah, yeah, right here. So, there's, it's looking like the cost is greater than revenue by about 1.5 million. Is that, I'm just looking at the total numbers, and I'm looking at the details in the tables, throwing some.
So, that, I believe that should be the scheduling differences. So, the stuff that's, was previously budgeted, that's just being shifted to the future period. It's projects that weren't completed, so the funding has already been secured for that. There's, so there's no new revenue.
Okay, so, for the biennium right now, what's that? What is it going to look like? Are we above, are we over-budget, under-budget? How is it?
Specifically for?
In general, I thought that was the, because it was hard to follow, that's why I'm asking for clarification.
Sure, sure.
What is, like, we approved the budget last year. Now, we're reviewing it, and there are some adjustments as we, understandable. But then, are we adjusting the budgets up? Like, are we going to be in a deficit, or are we going to be a surplus? How, what does it look like?
Overall, we're still, September Miles came and gave you the update. So, overall, we're still about $3 million under budget citywide.
Okay.
If you have specific questions about any piece, I can always research.
No, I mean, we have to run the city.
Yeah, let me try to answer that. So, you are talking about the capital improvement, the capital facility plan, which is really a seven-year plan. So, we really don't need to balance the budget one-to-one. So, what we are saying is, we have budget secured, but we also have a schedule shift. So, those may be pushed to future years. So, it is not by the end of the biennium, we will have a one-to-one balanced budget, but we are definitely.
Okay, it would be helpful in the next time to maybe show, here's what was approved, what we talked about and agreed to at the beginning, like, at the beginning of the biennium, and then here's where we are today, and then here's where projected to be. So, that when we have the discussion now in a couple months, you know, well, in a few months, as a council, we're going to have a discussion on the next biennium.
That's correct.
So, it'll be good to just be able to have a comparison year over year on things, you know, so.
We will definitely do that. Thank you.
So, but as, just from my understanding, we are not over-budget on anything?
No, no, not at all. Not at all.
Okay, cool, thank you.
I think we are in a very fortunate situation, that we have been very conservative in our planning, in our budget planning, and now we are just managing the schedule.
Okay, okay, sounds good. Thank you.
I just wanted to say, we love a boring mid-by update.
It definitely doesn't feel like we're on a roller coaster, and I appreciate that. And I do have some questions, just for clarification's sake. When you were speaking about the stabilization fund, so, it was 250,000 each year, and then was that 500,000 that you, that was mentioned in the presentation in addition to? So, for a total of 750,000 across the two-year budget cycle?
It's, okay, sorry. So, the, what was discussed was at the end of the biennium, starting with 2024, if there's, the general fund fund balance was above the threshold, then the additional 500,000 would be transferred. So, it's 250 per year for the cycle, plus the additional 500, so it's a million.
A million, okay, thank you. Thank you for clarifying. I'd love to hear that, and really appreciate, you know, the validation of seeing a city make steps towards sustainability. And so, thank you for that. I also heard you just briefly mention that. I also heard you just briefly mention that the, some, in, in the other miscellaneous updates was funding for low-income assistance for utilities, and thank you for catching that and making sure that it's included. I was, for, in my day job, I was at a presentation recently for Snohomish County, for Snohomish, the, the PUD, and, and that was the, the whole topic, is how do we help community members know how to access the discounts that they're eligible for? And so, you know, I, I hope that, that, you know, that work is going on in, in Bothell for our utility users as well. So we've had many conversations on that, and just glad to see it's reflected here, too, and included, so thank you. And then I, you know, excited about replacing of the shop one. It's a, I keep, you know, every time I drive by, I'm like, is anything happening? Are there cars there? So I'm, I'm very curious to see how that gets utilized going forward, but really, in this, in this context, I'd love to know if you have a timeframe for reimbursement on that yet.
I will look into that.
Okay.
Sure.
It, I, I know that the intention is that, you know, it will be reimbursed, but I'd, I'd love to know what that timeframe is, if you can find out. Now, I'm, I apologize if this is a wonky question, and I tried to put it into terms that made sense. Around the increased fees to make up for full cost recovery, if you were to like estimate the relative increase, so like, how much of an increase are we talking about? Significant, right? Like?
I do not have those numbers with me.
Jason's here.
Yeah, Jason.
I see a hand in the audience.
Didn't you say in the presentation that we were at like ninety-eight percent or something like that, and we wanted it to a hundred?
That's correct. Last year, at the end of last year, we did receive a study that showed that we were at ninety-eight percent full recovery, and it's really a discrete number of certain land use types and some fire and public works types permits that are showing that we're off. Some of those are very infrequent. In some cases, we only get one or two a year. So on a scale of things, it's really just a small amount. Of the eighteen-hundred or so permits we've received thus far this year, about one-hundred-and-twenty of them would be impacted if that could see a sense of scale.
Sure, and it, and like, how much, I guess, how much is it felt by the people who are having to pay these impacts? Are they just like, this is the cost of business, we understand? Like, does it, have you heard any, you know, everybody wants to pay less all the time, it'd be great, but like, how, how's the pushback? Or, or, you know, are people generally accepting of these increases that they're seeing?
I wish I could speak for those that are on the other side. I don't often get feedback. I don't know that people are necessarily happy when they pay any fee, when they're trying to get service from the city. I will tell you that we have really increased our response times, and I'm hoping that's helping mitigate some of the impacts on our permit reviews. And we're also very transparent about what to expect from the time a permit is submitted. I don't think that this adjustment would fall disproportionately on one particular permit type or one sector. It really is just trying to bring that last two percent back to that cost recovery. Just by example, about five years ago, the city instituted a site plan process that had not been formalized before, and so the fee that was initially established really was untested. We didn't know what it was going to cost. Well, now that we're five or six years into it, we do have that assessment. And we received one site plan so far this year, and the prior three years, maybe three per year. So again, it's not going to necessarily hit one particular type of applicant disproportionately, in my opinion.
Great. Well, and, and I appreciate, you know, you putting the thought into understanding some of those implications of when there's increases, and so, thank you for volunteering to come to the hot seat. Last question that I have is, I see in the packet, we have two drafts of ordinances that would increase the, the tax, the levy rate by one percent. And I'd, I'd love to hear from you, what are some of the factors for why that's beneficial to the city?
Why the city should take the one percent?
Yeah. Like, why, why, like, how does that help you budget going forward?
The, the one percent is a, I would say it's a structural, what's the word?
Challenge.
It's a challenge. Because the CPI was two-point-seven percent, and we're only allowed to increase our collections by one percent, which means every year we're still falling behind. So, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So, yeah, just structurally, just being able to take one percent is, you're falling behind inflation. So every year, you're, you're actually losing money. You're, we're not able to keep up with, with the costs of, of services, and eventually we're not going to be able to keep providing the, the same level of service for our residents.
Well, I'll just jump in too. We talked about this recently, as you may recall, when we were, council was contemplating going out to the community for the, for the safe streets and sidewalks levy renewal, is that really how Washington State voters have directed how cities should operate was by putting this one percent property tax increase cap on, and then anything that's above, above and beyond that goes out as a voted measure. And so that's our commitment to the community, is that if there's any additional level of services Andrew was mentioning, because we will fall behind by, just by nature unless inflation is one percent, and those years do happen, but not all that often. And so, and, you know, in those cases, then it's our job to, with the transparent process that goes to voters, define, here's a package and opportunity, here's what would happen, we'll report back on an annual basis, and when this levy expires, we'll come back out to you. And so that one percent, you know, again, I think, I appreciate the question, because as a community member and as somebody who's also paying that property tax bill, and, you know, a lot of us, I think we look at the total, and we don't necessarily look at the pie chart, although it's available, but as Andrew pointed out, there, it goes to a lot of different places that, that we all find value in, and we find important. But that one percent, when, when we don't take it, again, that's always a choice to be made, but it really does, it does signal and come with the cost of, then what, what are we going to stop doing? If there are services that the city should get out of the business of, then that's a, it's an easier conversation to have, because we're, we're basically saying that we'll start paying for inflation through stopping doing something that the city has traditionally done. So by virtue of having, of presenting the one percent a year, it gives an opportunity to, to have that pause and say, is there, are we doing the right things? And if we are, it makes it more of a consideration to take it. If there are things that we decide, you know what, and this is something that the city's going to step away from, I think that's an easier decision to say, maybe this isn't the year to take it. So just as a, again, I appreciate the question and where it's coming from. I think too, for people who are watching at home, just to know that as we do put together the biennial budget too, we do always come to council at the beginning of that biennium to say, should we assume one percent for, for both years? But part of the mid-by process is to pause, check, and look, and that is where we're at right now.
I really appreciate both responses. Thank you. Thank you for taking the question and, and for being sensitive to how, how the community receives that information, so appreciate it, thank you.
One quick other add-on, just because it's always a good opportunity to remind people, and I, you also asked a great question about utility assistance and, and what's available, and just as a, as a reminder for anybody who's watching, one of the things that the city council asked for last, in twenty-twenty-four, as you were looking at a new ten-year agreement with recology for, for hauling services in the community, was asking about how do we apply something like the utility rate assistance to, to our, our trash bills? And so just as a reminder, part of this, this funding that is in here is a correction, also makes available to low-income seniors and low-income disabled customers in Bothell an opportunity to qualify for a twenty-five percent rate discount on your recology bill. So there is information on the city's website for that, and I share that with both anyone who's watching, but also the, also the city council. So if you are hearing from constituents who fall into those two categories and are having a, a difficult time with the increase in the recology bill, that is a, a program that they, they should strongly consider, and we are always happy to provide information.
And I would just add, since we are talking about property taxes tonight, that there is property tax relief for this, those same groups as well. And so between utilities, you know, solid waste collection and, and property taxes, the, the city really has attempted to offset the increased costs for households that do not have the ability to absorb those increased costs. So thank you for that reminder, City Manager.
Thanks for the presentation, and thanks, Councilmember Aldrich, for asking more questions about the one percent that we've kind of assumed. My question about the one percent is, since we have been capped at one percent, has the city of Bothell ever opted not to take the one percent?
Yes, we, we had, and yes, the decision was made by previous council to not take the one percent.
To not take the one percent?
Correct.
Okay. That's good information to have on file in my brain. I want to pivot to another question that came up while I was reading through the packet, and it's on page one-hundred-and-ten. It's the same tables that council, that Deputy Mayor Alcabra was talking about. Yes, one of the projects I saw was the one-O-second Avenue Northeast Bridge repairs, and I was curious whether the cost increase there of one-point-seven million, was that the full cost of the emergency repair, or was that an increase from a different cost? I know that we also have this item on our capital facilities plan. It's not repairs as much as replacement, and so how are all those things intersecting? And can you talk a little bit more about the revenue increase that we received?
So let me, let me talk about this, and if I'm missing something, the, the Public Work Director will chime in. So for the emergency damage, we repaired the bridge, but without replacing it. And the, and the revenue to do the repair is mostly coming out of our insurance. We put in almost like a million-dollar reimbursement, and we are still seeking additional ones. But after the initial one-million-dollar, the process will be a little bit more complicated. So we are still working with our, our insurance agent to make sure that we are able to recover.
Thank you. Good evening, council. Director Wong is, is correct, so that, that line item isn't related to the bridge replacement project, that is purely the monetary value to repair it when it got hit twice in a row last year.
So when we see insurance reimbursement, that's the city's insurance for the infrastructure, or is that the insurance company of the vehicles which have?
A, a little bit of both. So we are, right now, healing the, the mark of debt coverage. So we are working, again, with the AWC agent to recover more. It's, again, it's a little bit complicated, and, and I think there are more works to be done to make sure that our own insurance will try to recover additional insurance from the companies that did the damage.
Okay. That's helpful. Yeah, I, I trust the city to look into all possibilities, possibilities there and recover cost where, where it can. So thanks for that update, and wow, one-point-seven million is, that would have been better to spend on replacement in the future rather than having to repair, but these are the kind of mid-by updates that we see, and, you know, sometimes there are things that we have to pay for that we don't want to, so. Thanks for the updates, and thanks, Director Lenhart, for input.
I wanted to get in before Rami, and I also, excuse me, Deputy Mayor Alcabra. I, I'm not quite sure how to phrase this question, but Councilmember Currie's question made me wonder, as far as we're hitting a limit on the insurance, are we then raising that limit? Should not hitting the bridge? I don't know, something not hitting the bridge, but just, I don't want to jinx it, but how, it makes me concerned that there's a limit that we could hit in just repairing the damage.
And we will evaluate that as always, but there will be additional costs. We're just trying to achieve a balance. You know, like, what would be the probability of that, you know, in the future versus how much we are paying in? And in the insurance business, again, I'm not the expert, but we have experts at the AWC to advise us. So we will talk about whether we should increase, but I'm, I think we will be working very hard with the AWC agent to recover cost in this incident, and then talk about your other coverage in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I wanted to follow up on the question of the one percent, or that wasn't made in the past, how, like, how, how many times, and why, and then what was the impact on our, on our finances?
We're going to bring forward the resident historian Ted Raina. Ted, thanks for joining us.
Good evening, everybody. As I recall, it was about a six-year span between twenty-oh-eight and twenty-thirteen, and the impact wasn't necessarily felt right away, but that money that you're not, that one percent that you're not collecting every year, then you're not collecting one percent on top of that the next year, and it compounds. It was banked, but they tried to have it in the measure that it was not banked, but I've yet to see anything that says you can actually not bank it, so answer unclear on that. But there was a study at one point, we ran some numbers, oh, twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen, something like that, and I think they calculated the impact at around four, we would have had an additional four million dollars to spend in one of the budgets, you know, twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen. So that's how much it cost over time, just not taking that one percent. And back in those days, having an extra four million dollars in our fund balance would have made a big difference. So speaking as the resident historian, I'd like to not go back to those times again, but different ears bring different challenges.
No, thank you for, for this historical lesson. Appreciate it, and I just wanted to understand if we decide, if for some reason decide not to take that one percent this time or next time, whatever, what would that impact? But we won't feel that this, if we want to save, if, you know, a little bit of money now, or, you know, not ask for revenue now, but it's going to be impacting us in the future, that will be, that will be a bigger impact in the future than this right now, right?
Again, it is a policy decision among council members, so it is your decision. What we are here to do is, you know, to tell you the numbers, and, and the idea of banking our capacity, unless you decide to exercise it in the future, that means additional burden on the taxpayers. So, so those are the choices. But again, it is your decision, and we're just telling you the impact and the numbers.
And with that, since everybody's looking at me instead of talking, we're adjourned.